All right. Good evening, everyone.
One nation, under God.
All right, the board met an executive session for about thirty minutes prior to this evening's meeting to discuss a variety of matters tonight. Mr. Fetzer is at the Suntec Awards Ceremony. Ms. Hanos is experienced and also Dr. Pannett. Okay, do we have any citizens comments to the board on agenda items?
We do not.
Our first board action item is to elect a PSBA voting delegate, but because the person who was most interested was absent tonight, I take the motion to table to vote at the next meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Mattis, second by Dr. Graham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Kristen, we'll just put that back on the next agenda so that we can make sure the person who wants to get it. Okay, so the next item is the election of the CSIU Board of Directors. This is our oh. Okay, there we go. There's a slate, and so as a good, that was what I was gonna say. You just have to select it and if you have any questions about this process, it's just a standard slate with no it's just a process essentially approval. Endorsement. Okay. Our next items are some policies for first readings. You can see there we have the agenda and committee minutes, and we have the two policies. Anything exciting that you want to call out?
No, I would say we worked very hard on revising the acceptable use policy. That one shows substantive updates, new legal citations. The other one affects our support staff and reflects what's current in our practice.
I think that's always best when policy reflects practice. Do I hear a motion to approve these policies for first reading?
So moved.
Uh, moved by Ms. Kraus, second by Ms. Lyons. Okay.
Mr. He.
Yes.
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 Thank you. We have an MOU, we have several MOUs coming up. These are all for changing the CBA. So we I'll take a motion to approve the first one, which is for the weight room monitor. Moved by Ms. Lyons.
Check.
Second by Dr. Mattis. Any discussion? Yeah, this can be voice vote, right? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our next one is the MOU for oh, this is for concert, changing the number of concerts with music staff. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Ms. Kraus. Second by Ms. Lyons. Any discussion? This is good because they recognize that they already do a whole bunch of extra stuff and they help each other out all the time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Our next one is the second assistant for the varsity boys soccer. I'm going to assume it's because we have a massive roster every year.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Mattis, thank you.
Second.
Second, I saw Joe's hand, I'm sorry. Second by Dr. Pannett. Oh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next one is including the assistant to the middle school principal, the position that we'll stay in for now. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Graham.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kraus. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next one is to make the change to the support staff handbook. Let me myself place the rotation.
That's all right. Um, I'll defer to Kyle to provide just the background to this.
Come on over here. Yes, so it's just a slight change to coming from a three dollars an hour stipend for waiving insurance benefits, changing that to a four thousand dollar stipend that's prorated across the year. And that's just to comply with Piersers.
Yeah. Did everyone remember that conversation? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Mattis. Second by Ms. Lyons. Um. All in, this is a good question.
Was it voice vote?
No, this is a roll call. Roll call. Take a roll call vote on this one. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Wait, I haven't called. It's okay, yes. You started.
I'm so sorry. Couple of really long days. All right, now we're on to information. This is the fun part, new curricular resources.
Yes, that's me. This is LinkedIn there for you, but we have a number of we did?
No, that was, that was a three dollar Piersers thing.
Oh.
I know, we had talked about it. Did I miss any of the items? Okay, because we did go pretty quickly. Okay. Okay, curricular resources.
Okay, so for board information, I have a list of curricular resources. The first one there is Bookworms, which is for grades two and grade three. It's a comprehension, fluency, and writing program that uses authentic texts, and it's similar to what we do right now, but it provides some consistent structure for our grade two and three teachers. And then the list of titles underneath are all the authentic texts that are used in that series, either through a read aloud or a shared read or an individual read, and so that's the long list of books that we'll be purchasing either for a read aloud or for partner read or individual read. Wanted to throw that to you, as well as a list of online subscriptions. Some of these were already being used. I just wanted to kind of bulk approve some of these because I couldn't find a specific board approval date. I just wanted you to be aware of these and things that we're currently using. A couple of them are new for next year, but I can explain anything on there as, as you need, as your questions that you have. Any?
I think a lot of us probably recognize a lot of these.
Yes, a lot of text, real text, texts that are not, that we've read. Roald Dahl is on there a couple of times. But good second and third grade choices. Some of the texts that were already, that are on the list are already have been approved previously as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. Next information piece is the courses.
And then the courses, I've got some new courses there for you for approval, things that were, that are new this year at the high school. Algebra II for ninth grade, as well as Algebra II is in there, a Creative Writing II course. News and a change in climate, our personal finance course went from a quarter credit to a half credit as a state mandate, and that just adjusted that. You can see the template there that we're using for all of our curriculum frameworks or curriculum maps, which also includes standards, and then there's a list of our K through five mathematics, as well as a few other ones. Again, that were just because it was a new format, so as a new format with the standards on there, I wanted to get them kind of reapproved over time here. So I'll continue to be bringing some of those to the table just to get reapproved because the standards have been added as well. So there's just a list there for you to review for board information.
So the new, so like all the math at the elementary school, that's not new math in any way, it's just
Just the standards were added to the second page. Yep, the script and sequence were already done. The, the description may have slightly changed. We had, we had some some, one of our in services, our teachers looked at them, that they wouldn't have made any drastic changes here at all. There could have been a word or two that might have been changed, but overall it is, is the previous one.
Why did we take the counting away from grade nine?
Um, let me see that one.
It's grades, grade level ten, twelve. I just, I just noticed that.
Does it say ten through twelve?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, let me review that because possibly that it is not the case, so I will check that before board approval, so I will take a, take a look at that. Because advanced accounting is ten to twelve, so it, counting one would have should be available in grade nine.
I know, I know that it was initially.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that may have just been. Thank you for that review. Yep.
Here's some exciting stuff, middle school facility improvements.
All right, that's still me. The first one on there is three different projects, well, I guess two. We're going to be extending the security vestibule in the middle school. Right when you walk in as a parent or your vendor coming in, you're coming in for a reason, you're buzzing in, and you're led into a small security vestibule, we're going to be extending that into the foyer and then have an exchange window that they can, they can connect with our administrative assistants. Again, it just makes it a little bit larger, allows the ability to have that conversation. And then beyond that will be an office for our school police officer, and it's going to be very similar to the copy room that we did this past summer. Aluminum walls with like windows as well, so that's going to be the add-on right there, but very similar to the copy room. And then in the library, there is a space to the right, we're going to kind of close that off with a door and some, some drywall there to make a, a smaller classroom. So those are the package of those, those three things that are available for board information tonight. And it is a coasters.
Until the next meeting for that?
We can, yep, or I think we're okay doing that.
Then the middle school athletic training improvement.
And then the training room down the hallway there is our training room, and it, it's in need of some upgrades. It's a little bit dated right now, the flooring, the it looks a little rough, and so the first part of that is over the summer, we're going to be emptying that room, we're going to be painting it and adding an epoxy flooring. We're working on some quotes for some new cabinetry, as well as some new tables for, for taping and for treatment. So those will come in time, but this is basically to paint the walls and to do the flooring from Bobby Cross painting.
A while ago, we had a conversation about a medication fridge. I'm only just remembering because of what we talked about earlier. Is that still the case that we have to have these separate medication refrigerators? Do you remember this conversation? Because there's one in the nurse's office and one in the trainer's room, and there's some things you can't get to in both. Are we going to fix that problem?
Help me remember that, that conversation.
Talking about, all right, it might be something we, we just need background on.
Yes. Fill me in and then we'll, I can definitely
Because I feel like when I learned how much, how expensive it was for like this special locked medication refrigerator, I said, oh, I see why we don't have another. Okay. Well, this is going pretty quickly. Board Presidents Report, so commencement is coming up, isn't very exciting, so that's Tuesday, week and a half from now. Yeah, I'm excited to celebrate all of our graduates. There's so many things happening to finish out the school year. Now, we, I know everyone's in busy with concerts and visiting schools and the last few little things outdoor and field days have happened, and so I just want to acknowledge if the administrators were here that run the buildings, I would say, I know it's a ton of work for them, but everything looks like it's been a very positive end to the year. And it sounds like testing, even though we had to do the online thing, all went really well. I didn't hear any
No, it went well.
Yeah, well, that's good, good transition. And everything's kind of done. I bet everyone who had to go through all of that for like, what felt like half the month of April is happy to be
It's a lot of time.
Yeah. All right, next up we have Vince, your report.
Okay, I got two things to share with you. Besides the end of the year festivities with graduation, as you just mentioned, let me just pull up my screen here real quick. The one I wanted to share with you first was our, our track and turf are finished, and this is actually not the picture of it. This is a picture of the schematic that we had about a year ago. And the, the real picture looks better than the schematic, so I wanted to show, this was what we were proposed, this is the actual finished product. And I think it looks fantastic. The lines are on there. I got a couple more photos to show just to kind of showcase it, but it looks great. The turf looks great, the track, the lines. It's just a really quality product. I'm, I'm very happy. I think we're, I think our track coaches are very happy that they get to use this in the offseason as well as and, and next season.
Did they always have eight lanes in the sprint corridor? I don't remember, but did they all have eight lanes on the sprint side?
I believe it did. It's, it's, it's matching what we had previously, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, no, I think it's great. It's great.
And then in the distance there, you can see kind of the throwing areas, and I got a close-up of that as well. This is the kind of the extended concrete that one of the change orders was, it kind of made that a little bit larger. Otherwise, the concrete pad would have been on the inside of these, so in this cutout that are in both, what was kind of a part of that change order as well. This is track surfacing as well for javelin. So again, the grass came in really nicely. It looks really, really nice, but overall is a, a, a good product. And some great drone shots that we got from Keystone Sports that I wanted to share this evening, so.
Wow, when did they take those, like?
Sunny day.
In the morning, oh, yeah, no.
I think they took this on Tuesday. It was actually, the painting wasn't quite done. They added a couple of things since then, but they're going to come back early next week to do our, kind of our final walkthrough with them, but but yeah, I was excited to see it.
You can see the, the softball fence, like you can see so much as far as improvements go right here. That's fantastic.
And our middle school can use it the rest of the school year for gym class. I think, I think Fun Day is going to be out on the, on the turf. So they're going to get some use, you know, before the end of the school year, which is good, but again, I think it looks, looks great. Excited for that.
It was really nice to be able to host on the turf field when going to other fields during this rainy season, everything was mushy potholes, so. It's definitely, you can tell from the weather, it's been, it was worth it.
It has, it has been a wet May for sure. And then the other one I wanted to share with you, and it is linked in your board docs, if you wanted to pull that open just to get a better view. This is a curriculum portal site that I wanted to show, show you tonight. This has all of our curriculum descriptions, all of the maps that we looked at earlier, that course description for all of the courses is like a parent facing document. We have a link on our website. So going to this portal, it's not public, it's not on the site quite yet. I wanted to get our staff to kind of review it before we actually posted it live. But if I'm a parent of, of a middle school or a high school, or I can click on the my, my building or my, my grade band, and then I can look at anything that I want to look at. I can look at ELA, and I can see all of the course descriptions, and they're searchable and things like that, and I can actually read about any course that I want to if I'm in the high school. If I'm a kindergarten parent, maybe I want to know what's happening in kindergarten, so I go to the elementary and open up kindergarten, you're going to see your core subject areas and our course descriptions for that. So it kind of gives that parent facing document, rather than giving them access to our entire curriculum framework, it's, it's pages and pages here. This is more parent friendly, student friendly for them to be able to read and see what is going to happen in that course. So just kind of pulls those all together. I wanted you to take a look at that. Again, I'm showing that to staff probably tomorrow to give me some additional, if there's anything that we need to tweak slightly, our principals have asked to this, asked us this now. Is there any documents that we want to add? I think on the elementary one, I put, we can, we have room for some links about family support for different series. This bridges one, for example, has some good resources on it. But wanted you to be aware of that, it's going to be posted on the website fairly soon. But questions on that?
Thank you for doing that.
No, no problem.
This has definitely been asked for for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. In the fact of like, being in a time right now where people really want transparency and nothing with STEM, I mean, I think that's just fantastic, and we're just putting it out there, so I think this is awesome.
Excellent, and I put the K elementary together because we have that kind of that K five for elementary, principal, assistant principal, so that's kind of collective there. And it kind of shows the continuum as we go up through the grades, so it's a resource for parents to ask questions. Sometimes we get emails that say, I'd like to see the curriculum for this, and I can just point them to our website, and they can review it all, so.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, so the next item is board liaison and committee reports.
Yeah, a few things I wanted to mention on the app of CSIU, so we met last night. A few things were brought up, one was Dr. Hack and the CSIU wanted to thank Lewisburg for hosting the Autism Awareness Month event that took place here. Many of us know about it because we saw it on the way into our board meeting. But we're, Ben Hartram, am I getting that right? Speaker, they said they had about sixty attendees, and they were very appreciative of Lewisburg for, for hosting that nice event. Then last night, in addition to the regular board meeting, Kathy was there as well when CSIU hosted its annual artists reception for high school artists. So we had two Lewisburg students from the district, Phoebe Dresser and Annika Shields. Both had work accepted and purchased by the CSIU to be displayed there in the, in the offices over in Montana. So it was a nice event where all the parents are not, sorry, students and their parents and their arc teachers were invited and recognized and, and fed. So anyway, just wanted to do a shout out to the, the Lewisburg folks particularly, but everybody who was involved in that event last night.
Have anyone talked about, have we met after the last team or did steam happen between the two meetings? Because that went very well, so I heard last. Yeah. My daughter went, she had, she had a great time.
So the community relations committee met on Tuesday. We met with Kathy Storm, Beth Comper, and Bonnie McDowell. Had a nice meeting, kind of just introductions, meet and greet. They kind of updated us on the plans that they have currently in the works. And had some questions for us that we need to find some answers to, and we had some questions for them that they're going to find some answers to, so we're planning to meet again hopefully in a few months when we might be able to bring something more to the board.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other things I might be forgetting meeting wise, or we had we had a really fast GDF one, but that was so fast, was it just a week ago, last Monday? Well, that was good because we reviewed three things, they were all approved, and it's getting more towards that model where we're identifying things that that GDF is really well positioned to support. Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve? So moved. Moved by Ms. Kraus. Second by Dr. Graham.
Just a question. On the, on the tax bill printing. Is there an option, you have a like I would love to get my tax bill electronic, is that possible?
I'm not currently aware of if we can do it electronically. It's something that I need to discuss with the collectors. And see if that's possible for setting up because it's through them currently, so they would have to have access to it.
Yeah.
Because I end up scanning it and sending it to the bank, so like it just would be easier if it was a digital copy and I could
Right.
And it would save us on printing costs, I would think. So. Just a question.
My mortgage company told me they get it digitally. How is that happening?
Not sure.
I don't have to send it anymore.
Yeah, that would be nice. I would love that.
I'll inquire about how they actually receive the information. Any other questions about that? But I, I think a lot of us would really like to see an online tax paying option, online notification, online pay. And it sounds like there's, you know, there's places around there doing it.
Teleprompter, just, as far as I know, I was able to do it the first time. Not to school that.
And those are the same, no, they're not the same taxpayers or tax collectors, rather, tax collectors.
I think they are, I think they are the same tax collector, but just not the same taxing authority. So I, I don't understand how that works.
Okay.
Could be wrong, maybe they are separate tax collectors, but I think it's
I actually don't know.
Probably the same.
Okay. Did you make a motion now? I don't recall.
We have a motion.
That's okay, that was the discussion. All right, I think we're ready for a roll call. Mrs. Kraus.
Yeah.
Ms. Lyons.
Yeah.
Dr.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'm going to imagine we don't have any citizens comments to put on non-agenda items. All right, well, time for director's comments. Joe.
Uh, yeah, I'm excited to attend graduation for the first time. And thank everybody for all the flurry of activities that are going on. It seems we're here at the school almost every night for one thing or another, so I can only imagine the people in charge of all this events, both the joy and the relief that they're going to be over soon, but yeah, that's about all I have. I just want to say, you know, thanks to everybody here on the board. And, yeah. Been a good one.
Similarly, I had the opportunity to attend a field trip to Reptile Land with my
Reptaland.
Reptaland.
Reptaland. You sound like a foreigner.
I am a foreigner. And I just want to commend the staff. Kids were really, everything was really organized. Kids were well behaved. We had a fun day, even though it was raining. So. They're all inside, and the alligator didn't move one iota. The kids were adding the guy on. They were like, poke it with your stick, and the guy was like, no, I don't think I'm um, yeah, so just thanks to our staff, to our administrators, to everybody for kind of pulling everything together here.
Yeah, just the same. I mean, it's the end of the year, and there's a lot of work that goes into the end of the year when kind of everybody's ready for summer, so just thank you to everybody that's putting together the field days and activities days and fun days and field trips and all of that. Yep, same. I was lucky enough to be here for two chorus concerts last week, and they were both phenomenal as always. And the STEAM event that the Dicken STEAM Academy put on last Tuesday night was lovely. The, one of the neat things to see was there was a station where they were working with coding, and obviously a lot of the kids that were attending are Lewisburg kids because it's here locally. And when they were showed this program, they were, they said, oh, I know that, I do that with Mrs. Miller. It was stuff that they had done, and the person running was like, wait, your school, like you guys do this, you have, and I said, yeah, we have a STEM teacher at elementary, it's another special. So just, I wish the principals were here, but it's just kind of like out in real time to have people acknowledge like, oh, what you're doing is like up, you know, what we want all the schools to be doing, so it was, it was just a neat experience. Yep, I did want to throw in, if anybody missed the sixth grade thriller chorus.
Oh, my gosh.
You have to find a video of it because that was really impressive and really awesome. So like, if you can find a video of it, it was, that was really cool. Yeah, no, Sarah Tidy lets the kids pick the ones, and I just think it's the neatest. It's always so impressive. It really is.
Anything else? How about you, Cory?
Just listening to all of you talk about how busy it is brings like big memories. Reminds me how nice it is to be past that.
Baseball field, this is lovely, right?
That's, I don't
Everyone said their thanks, I do want to say an extra, extra thank you because it was pointed out to me that there's been so many chairs and tables that have had to be moved for different events. It's been nonstop. there's been so many chairs and tables that have had to be moved for different events. It's been nonstop for the custodians in all buildings at all times, it feels like. And so kudos to them because the turnover has been almost like one a day for some of these types of things. And when we have guests in the building, of course, that just adds to the, and there was food involved, right? So you just, you move some furniture around, you add some food, and it's, they, they really done an amazing job. All right, well, I'll hear a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Lyons.
Right.
Second by Dr. Mattis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned. Thank you. Not a record, but a quick one. I just wanted to wait till.